Good evening, everyone. Now call to order this September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of City Council, the City of Lancaster. A couple of reminders here at the top of the meeting for everyone. Please take a moment to silence your phones and devices if you haven't done so already. This meeting and its participants are being recorded. This evening, there will be several opportunities for public comment. If you wish to make comment, please do so at the podium here and speak into the microphone so that you can be heard both in this room and on our live stream. Please begin comments with your full name and your block of residence for our meeting record. Comments should pertain to issues that have or may come before council as legislation and should be addressed toward council. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, and to keep time, you will see this light here turn green when a speaker begins. It will turn yellow when there's one minute remaining, and it will turn green when three minutes has been exhausted. Thank you in advance for ensuring that everyone has equal time. And now for all of those who are willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harris, would you please call the roll of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Med?
Here.
Mr. Royo?
Here.
Mr. Gleese?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Hirsch? And President Beckett?
Here. Counselor Hirsch is excused this evening. Our next item is the approval of the minutes for the August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the meeting minutes. Any council comments on them? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Mr. Gleese?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
And President Beckett?
Aye. Our next item on the agenda are proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition. Tonight appears we have two. The first is Council Resolution Number sixty-four, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Harris?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster recognizing Welcoming Week in the City of Lancaster and celebrating the city's continuing designation as a certified welcoming city by the organization Welcoming America.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This says on the agenda introduced by President Beckett, but I'm deferring to Counselor Ahmed for this as the presenter of this resolution. Counselor Ahmed?
Thank you, Council President. Welcome Week is very important here in Lancaster. You know, I remember prior to my time on council being on the other side of the day as presenting Welcome Week projects, welcoming new neighbors, and it's at the utmost important that we continue our commitment to welcoming here in the City of Lancaster as we're seeing increases in misinformation and hateful rhetoric around the welcoming of immigrants. It's refreshing to see that Lancaster still is committed to our commitment to welcoming. We have many entrepreneurs, new neighbors who work in multiple different facets of our government and in our small businesses, healthcare sectors. It's also International Housekeeping Week, so if you know a housekeeper, make sure you thank them for their service as well. And as somebody who came here as a refugee in the late nineteen nineties and now being able to give back and serve the City of Lancaster, I can attest to the welcoming spirit that we have always had, and it is an honor to be a part of continuing to welcome here in the city. So I want to say thank you to the City of Lancaster for its commitments. We have a lot of fun activities planned, and thank you to all of our partners, Church World Service, CASA, so many others. But just wanted to say thank you to everybody for allowing me to serve and for the city to continue to welcome. And that concludes my remarks, Council President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ahmed, and I just want to share that Welcoming Week is always very special. To me, it is our spirit of welcome in the City of Lancaster and the fact that we are a certified welcoming city and what that entails is always one of the first things that I share to anyone about Lancaster when I get to talk about and brag about our city, which I do an awful lot. It is truly one of the things I'm most proud of, so I'm glad we get to honor it in this way and that we're going to be celebrating it with events all through the next week. Are there any additional council comments on the resolution? I'll take any comments from the public on the resolution. Figure there may be someone here for that. Good evening. As you begin, the microphone may not be on, so just hit that button so you see the green light, and please begin with your name and block of residence. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Madison Galzick. I'm a student at Franklin and Marshall College. Hello, council members. I am here in my role as a student of Franklin and Marshall College as well as the president of F and M Action for Refugee Resettlement, otherwise known as FAR, a student-run club interested in furthering Lancaster's status as a home for forced migrants. For roughly three months out of the year, I live in Norristown, Pennsylvania, but for the other nine months, I am a proud resident of Lancaster, my second home. Before I begin, sorry, I would like to say that I am not an immigrant or the child of immigrants or a refugee or the child of refugees. In fact, I had little knowledge of the communities before I enrolled at a community-based learning course at Franklin and Marshall. In spite of my lack of personal experience, I found the class to be life-altering. I also realized that to learn about the immigrant and refugee experience is to learn about Lancaster. The two are very closely intertwined, and that's what makes this city very remarkable. FAR, the student organization that I represent, has played a role in supporting the Lancaster community. We've partnered with Women's Global Village, Church World Service, and local businesses that support refugees by offering fair employment. I am proud of the work that my organization has done and even prouder of the work we plan on continuing to do. Through student and faculty initiatives and support from Church World Service, FAR has done wonders in linking F and M students to the Lancaster community, a connection that has been lacking in years past. Moreover, however, I am here because we, F and M, support the City Council in its initiative to uphold Lancaster's status as a welcoming city. As this lovely Welcoming Week will soon commence, my club will work to bring F and M students to all the festivities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments from the public on the resolution? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel Malobi Balija. I'm from Africa, Congo. I came in two thousand and seventeen, December. Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about life we're living now. The time I came in Lancaster, I was living this green life. It was so very good because the most people we was have the job. But the challenge we have now, the most African people, we don't have the job. Example like me, it's one here I don't have anything I do. That's the most people from Africa now, they have nothing they are doing. They stay home. Example, the first is me. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments on the resolution? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Guamechakar Kense. I'm a resident of Lancaster, also work for Church World Service as a refugee and immigrant organizer. I'm very thankful for Lancaster City. As I arrived here in two thousand and eighteen, I had a lot of dreams. I had a lot of expectation for America. However, we all know that the resources for refugee and immigrants are not enough to strive, but the people of Lancaster, their neighbors, make me feel that I belong. I'm really thankful for the people of Lancaster, and also I'm very thankful for the City of Lancaster for all the resources they provide. That a lot of immigrants and refugees are organized, they are aware of the services City of Lancaster provide. I'm very thankful for Karist, I'm very thankful for Ahmed, Ahmed who came to our training of Local Government One-O-One to provide a lot of information and resources for our community. Yes, we still need more resources. We're thankful for language interpretation for City Council, they provide that people can feel welcome, can stand here and address you, inform you the concern they have. However, there are still other organizations which serve refugee and immigrants who are now providing interpretation. As my friend said about the job, many times when the company hiring, they look for their language capability. However, these people need to pay the bills, they need to pay the taxi, they need to feed their children. So we would like that Lancaster can do more to encourage the other company to provide interpretation and not discriminate people according to their language capability and where they're from. Thank you very much, and I'm very happy and proud to be Lancasterian.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. This is Fariba from Afghanistan. So I want to say that it's been nine months that I'm here, but I'm so thankful to the Lancaster city because the first day I remember, I came by myself, I'm alone, I have no family member here, but Lancaster become my family. I don't want to be emotional today, but it's hard. It's super hard, being a refugee. It's hard all the time, but I'm thankful because I have faced with a beautiful organization that helped me and they welcome me as a memory, like family member. IU thirteen, my brother Faizi, he helped me a lot. In these nine months, I got certification medical health offices to ship. So I have a job right now at Lancaster General Health, but the thing is, I want to be the voice of refugees. As a refugee, you can see a lot of problems because there is a lot of things happening in Lancaster that is really good, but there are all works to be done for women refugees. There are a lot of men that they are going outside, but no one is asking about women refugees. That's the only thing I want everybody attention about women refugees because there is another life. When you are coming from another country, third world countries like Afghanistan, I don't know, Africa, any other countries, women are seen as different people, weak people. But when you come to the United States, you can see different, different. So I really want everybody to like see women and give attention for them. I have a lot of things to say, but I want to shortly say that I'm thankful to SUDPIS, they helped me a lot. But one thing more also I want to add that refugees, they will struggle with job, education, finances, finding a house, a lot of different other issues that is really, really important. Everybody should just help, go and help. Because I remember myself, the first day I was, for three months, I was disappointed about my life. I was isolated, sitting in the room and knowing where I am going in this big city. I have no family, I don't know anyone. But after the, I know that this refugee agency came, but still it is not that much. So I really want you guys to pay attention for the women refugees. That's really important. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments on the resolution? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ahmed Faizi. I'm from Afghanistan too, so I could count myself in one of new or previous Afghan. So I've been into the United States in two thousand and seven, but I came to Lancaster in two thousand and twenty-two in January. So I started working in Lancaster, so before that, I was an interpreter, working and culture advisor for the US Army in Afghanistan. So while I got here, so I was living in New York for a little while, moved back, working there and helping and came back, unfortunately, whatever happened. So by the time I realized, New York City was not a city that I could live, too expensive, too big. When I heard about Lancaster City as it's the most welcoming city for the refugees or immigrants, so I decided to come and work here and live here. So what I was hearing and finally I seen, it was more than that. So I would like to thank you, the city, especially right now while I'm working as a cultural navigator and education advisor for IU thirteen. So most of the time, I work at the Refugee Center of IU thirteen at Renner School. So most of the time, our refugees, when they have problems, so our first place to solve the problems or people who are hearing is the city. So I would like to say, especially the Housing Department, they have been very, very helpful for those refugees who've been living in this city in a different situation of the area. So I would like to thank you, like all those resources that we have in Lancaster. If it's IU thirteen for English classes, CWS for resettlement, F and M and Tech Central and several others, I would like to thank you, the city, to look more for English classes than interpretation. That way, these refugees can stay more reliable, self-sufficient, that they could do much more. So I would like to thank once again, thanks for the invitation, and I appreciate it. I hope we become once again a certified welcoming city. So as I started with a rent and now I have my own house, now I have a full-time job, got a car, everything, so all those refugees who works, who lives here, so I would say I am working with over than three hundred refugees families, the majority of them are super happy from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public on the resolution? Hearing none. Oh, sorry. I should have known when Zara popped up. Ms. Baloo, good evening. And I will say this is not a public comment, this is Zara Flue, our Language Access Coordinator for the City of Lancaster. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here before City Council. I am here to provide you with a special update on the Office of Language Services. The city, I mean, the Office of Language Services has been created and dedicated to ensuring that all residents have equal access to city services regardless of the language that they speak. Think I'm on the next slide. The Office of Language Services does provide translation services for documents in various languages, interpretation services to coordinate interpreters for meetings, conferences, events, offering simultaneous and consecutive interpretation, and also implementing language accessibility tools such as the Propio language line with video remote interpretation. We also provide language support and consult for multilingual communication strategies, including language access planning and cultural competency training. Next slide, please. As of August of two thousand and twenty-four, the Language Services Office has received eighty-nine language service requests, various types. In-person interpretation requests, eighteen. We have received twenty-two ASL interpretation requests, translation of documents, one hundred and twenty-one translations, including about forty in-house Spanish translations. Language proficiency testing have been twenty-six for a total of two hundred and seventy-six service requests, and it is only mid-year. On the next slide, we're going to appreciate Propio Analytics from our Language and Video Remote Interpretation Line, and there is a comparison here within the year two thousand and twenty-three and the year two thousand and twenty-four, highlighting twenty-one to twenty different languages being requested throughout the year, however highlighting the most popular languages to be among Spanish, Spanish, Swahili, Arabic, and Kenyewanda and Haitian Creole. You can appreciate that this year, we do have an increase in Haitian Creole request throughout the language line and that the minutes being used for this year has exceeded last year's request, and again, we're only at mid-year. So I do want to be very grateful to our Lancaster city staff, who is very dedicated to serving anyone without regard of language or as long as there is a tool available for them, they are more than willing and grateful to be able to serve our city residents. Next slide, please. We can also appreciate on this slide a difference within year two thousand and twenty-three and year two thousand and twenty-four by department, where in the year two thousand and twenty-three, our CPED and Police Departments were in a strong match trying to equal services requests at the Propio line, and seems to be the same for the year two thousand and twenty-four. However, seeing that in two thousand and twenty-four, it is CPED, the department, that is utilizing the line the most, and mainly from our lead team who continually sees diverse families in the community as they are providing and assessing homes for lead remediation services. We can also see that our Public Works Departments is also utilizing the line when they are seeing constituents for lead service lines and the water meter shop. Next slide, please. Some highlights for the Office of Language Services is that we have improved communications for emergency communications, planning and interpretation services at events such as tonight. We are having a live ASL interpretation taking place. We have included ASL interpretations in most of our public events such as celebrate Christmas tree lighting and even our Red Rose Room, understanding that everyone is welcome to come and participate and enjoy our events. Additionally, we have streamlined processes, developing internal processes for staff to easily access language access tools and request services, including an intrasite for our staff where they can access videos on how to use the Propio line, how to, how to interact with an interpreter, how to work with an interpreter, and the appropriate or best practices in an interpretation session. Our two thousand and twenty-five plans are to continue conducting training on language access and offering policy information sessions for staff, planning and assessment of our current tools to ensure their effectiveness, to continue to elevate a service-oriented culture, which is very much elevated within our staff. I cannot be much more grateful. And viewing every request as a chance to assist, educate, and provide exceptional service. Next slide, please. Here is some staff feedback. So our social workers have been utilizing the language line at our CPED Department and also our Police Department. One of the social workers wrote these very nice feedback with the use of the language line and the support of the Language Services Office. He says, "I would like to thank this opportunity to emphasize the critical role of language access in the City of Lancaster and specifically cite us contributions. Recently during an intake meeting, a participant did not disclose their need for sign language interpretation. With the support from a Language Access Office, immediately stepped in, efficiently accessing the sign language portal, enabling us to reschedule the intake with proper communication support. This is a testament to our teamwork and the unified culture within our city." And just to highlight that this experience actually happened for the first time that our staff member was utilizing the language line, which can sometimes be intimidating, and sometimes you do need the assistance of another team member in guiding you through the process. Next slide, please. And the Language Access Office was instituted from, streamlining from federal language access laws and also from our Certified Welcoming certification. So Certified Welcoming is a program from Welcoming America. We've been certified a welcoming city since two thousand and nineteen, as many of you know. Certified Welcoming is a formal designation for local governments committed to inclusion. Recently, there's about more than twenty-one cities certified welcoming throughout the United States and now extending globally. So we are part of a global network of cities that have reviewed their policies and programs and have adopted them to be inclusive of refugees and immigrants and have considered DEI principles into becoming very much inclusive of everyone. Again, the program assesses and evaluates the government and community efforts to be inclusive of all, and the assessment highlights strengths and opportunities. One special strength that was highlighted throughout our assessment of two thousand and twenty-two was the engagement process implemented by the COMPLAN in engaging refugee and immigrant groups to have their voices lifted and heard for the COMPLAN development. To be a little more specific about this special highlight, the engagement that took place for our refugees and immigrants was culturally based with language and language accessibility embedded throughout the engagement and also cultural and ethnic practices to ensure that everyone feels welcome. And something very special to be heard from our refugee communities was the sense of gratefulness to have the local government welcome them and also consider them into the processes. The Welcoming Standard Framework areas are civic engagement, connected community, economic development, education, equitable access, government and community leadership, and safe communities. Within the government and community leadership framework, Welcoming America will be looking now into how policies and programs are inclusive of all, not only at the local government level, but across community. This work cannot be accomplished without our partners. Next slide, please. And here we can see some of our partners, not all are in here, but these are some of the partners that have taken serious steps into embedding and serving our refugee and immigrant communities. This year, two thousand and twenty-four, the City of Lancaster is assessing, is re- This year, 2024, the city of Lancaster is reassessing to become certified welcoming under a star three. And as I was conducting an initial assessment, it was very unique and special to see the work of community partners to ensure that our refugee and immigrant communities are also included in their programming and services. A special highlight is for our literacy council and learning success centers in their ESL programming, extending it to digital learning through the access of a QR code. Another special community partner was Lancaster REC, embedding a language access plan and translation of their programming into multiple languages, and the very unique Unity Cup taking into its second year, ensuring that everyone can enjoy a sport without regard of cultural background or language. Additionally, I have to highlight the work of assets into the business development of everyone here at the city of Lancaster. It was very impressive to see the work being completed through podcasts and highlighting businesses, and also the partnership work with Lancaster General Health in ensuring that the contracting of services is inclusive and also that the process is inclusive and also that it embraces local businesses. So with this update, I thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity to have the honor to conduct this assessment and work with such amazing people such as everyone here at the city of Lancaster. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. We appreciate that update, and the language access alone numbers are very impressive. And also, I know that that is just a small part of being a certified welcoming city, so thank you for that. We are still before vote, so I will say one more time, just in case, any additional public comment on the resolution before us. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Rubin.
Mr. Ruben.
Aye.
Mr. Sples.
Aye.
Mr. Crader.
Aye.
Mr. Diaz.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. Thank you.
Councilor Met, I believe you have a presentation copy of this resolution?
Yes, Council President, if I may, I have some copies for some of our speakers here this evening, and we'll take a photo if anybody would like to join.
Great. All right. Bear with us for just a moment. These are always fun. Our next resolution of recognition, Resolution Number 65, 2024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, recognizing September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encouraging awareness among the citizens of Lancaster of the important contributions from people of Latino descent. Motion through, second.
We have a motion and a second. This resolution has two councilors who have introduced it, or who have sponsored it. We have Councilor Diaz and Councilor Royal. Turn it over to Councilor Diaz first.
I would like to take the opportunity to read the resolution because Ruben's here, and I reached out to him and felt that this is the opportunity to have those that have, I would say, like a disability, and he's very well appreciated in the city. He served twenty-six years. So the resolution of Lancaster Council of the City of Lancaster recognizes September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encouraging awareness among the citizens of Lancaster of the important contribution from people of the Latino descent. Whereas the month of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four has been designated as the National Hispanic Heritage Month in the United States, whereas the National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated by highlighting the countless contributions, vast influence of Latinos in the United States, and whereas the events during this month give us the opportunity to highlight the positive aspects of the culture and show the diversity of Hispanic community in the city of Lancaster. And whereas the city of Lancaster has rich influx of residents from Puerto Rico, like Ruben, and countries as the Dominican Republic, Cuba, Colombia, Mexico, and other Latin American countries, whereas Hispanic residents made up of a total of thirty-nine point four percent of population of the city of Lancaster, and continues in the 2020 census and statewide where responsible for as much as a population's growth it experienced in Pennsylvania in the 2020 census. And whereas Pennsylvania Hispanic population grew by forty-five point eight percent in the census 2020 to more than one point one million, I had to add the point one, people, whereas Hispanic workers enrich contribution as all aspects of society, including but not limited as art, labor, education, military service, and medical field. They did so while advocating for inclusion, acceptance, and tolerance of all. Now therefore be it resolved by the city, by the Council of the City of Lancaster that will be celebrating recognizing strong community to family, community, and hard work that Hispanic citizens have brought to the city of Lancaster. Be it forth resolved that the city of Lancaster wishes to acknowledge the contribution by Hispanic citizens to rich culture, diversity, and quality of the life in the city of Lancaster. Be it forth resolved that the city of Lancaster is pleased to designate this month of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Lancaster.
Thank you very much. Back, Councilor Diaz.
And real quick, in celebration, I did want to recognize the mayor went a little festive type, even though they brought me the wrong thing. It was supposed to be a gigantic gesture, but it became a miniature one because, you know, you send a man to get something and they get the wrong thing. No offense.
Thank you, Councilor Diaz. Councilor Royal.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few comments regarding the resolution. One, I do want to recognize that it's being introduced alongside with the recognition of Welcoming Month, or sorry, Welcoming Week, and it's a reminder that many of our folks that came before us also immigrated or migrated to the United States, and it's beautiful to see that they came to Lancaster because of opportunity, and it's reminded around a lot of the folks that are now community leaders that I see many in the audience here today, and it's very humbling to know that these community leaders paved the path for folks like many of us to sit up here. So it's very humbling, and definitely want to recognize the folks that came before us that make this possible. Also want to recognize that we are looking for such a community leader. The city of Lancaster is accepting nominations for the Hispanic Community Achievement Award, and also other events are happening here in the community for the month to celebrate. The Lancaster Chamber is hosting Cote de Valle Hispanic Business Lunch on October eleventh, and it's, again, reminders that our community is made stronger by the entrepreneurial spirit that comes from immigrants, refugees, the Hispanic community, BIPOC, women-owned businesses that really make our community a lot stronger. A special shout-out to someone, a Latino business owner who celebrated ten years in business this month, Daniel Falcone of Lancaster Cigar. You know, ten years is a huge, huge milestone, especially for folks that come from diverse backgrounds, so it's something to be recognized. And we'll continue to celebrate the culture on October fifth, when the city is hosting the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration in Yoplait Plaza in Benz Park. So just, again, a lot of reminders that it's, you know, it's important for us to look back and realize that we're able to be here because we stand on the shoulders of giants. So really, you know, it's great to take the opportunity to recognize that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Royal. Are there any additional council comments on the resolution? Comments on the resolution from the public? Good evening, and I'll just remind, please begin with your name and block of residence. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Council. My name is Randolph Hernandez Medina, soon to be resident of the six-hundred block of North Lime Street. Glad to be coming back to Lancaster City from a township I shall not name. Before I start, I just want to say to our refugee friends, I don't think there was a dry eye in the room when they were speaking. Their courage is inspiring, and that's a hard act to follow. With that being said, I just want to congratulate them for their journey, and they have a large support system here, and thank you for being part of our city. In addition to that, I want to thank Lancaster City Council, Mr. Royal, and Ms. Diaz for sponsoring this bill and formally recognizing the contributions, the rich contributions, the long contributions of Hispanics, Latinos, and the Latinx community in Lancaster City. And I encourage for Lancaster City Council to, in the future, take strategic measures to maybe address, further address, our growing population and their needs, and maybe incorporate some more cultural engagement with the Latino community, because we are more than just dancing, we're more than just food, we're contributors, as Mr. Royal stated, entrepreneurs, we're in all fields, we're educators, we're politicians. So let's go, let's look past the dancing and the food, that's all great, but there's more sap substance in our culture. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional comments from the public on the resolution? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mint.
Aye.
Mr. Royal.
Aye.
Mr. Sples.
Aye.
Mr. Crader.
Aye.
Mr. Diaz.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. Thank you.
President Baker, if we can.
Councilor Diaz, yes.
With Ruben and the others, I would like to take a picture.
Great. We have a presentation copy of this resolution as well. We are moving into our first public comment period. Is this pertaining to this resolution that we just voted on? He won.
She would have to speak.
Yeah. So since this is regarding the resolution we just voted on, we might have missed the opportunity, I want to make sure that members of the public get to speak.
I just wanted to briefly share something. I just wanted to thank you all for voting on this. I've worked in the city now for twenty-six years in the Parks Department, and I've worked very hard for a long time, and I am part of the Latino, but also part of the deaf community in the city, and I came here to listen and learn tonight, to hear more about, you know, the very diverse city that we live in, and it's just really beautiful and inspiring, and I just wanted to thank you for all that you do as a council. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that there are some folks that may have come for just those resolutions, and that is okay. If you need to step out, this would be the time to do so, but you're more than welcome to stay the rest of our meeting this evening. And we'll just take a moment to allow those that are stepping out to step out. All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, we've now moved into our first public comment period. This public comment period is reserved for residents who have requested the opportunity to address council prior to this meeting. As a reminder, duration of all public comments is limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and block of residence for our meeting record. Mr. Harris, do we have a public comment for this period?
Yes, we do. First is Steve Nenadovic.
Is Steve in the building? I don't believe so.
Next is Robert Painter.
Mr. Painter? I don't see Mr. Painter either. Do we have additional comments for this period?
Next is Dave Castarella.
I know that Mr. Castarella is here. Good evening.
Thanks for, excuse me, thanks so much for having, listening to me. My name is Dave Castarella, nine-hundred block of First Street. I worked with the End Up Partners. I worked up, I work with the End Up Partners, and I do a lot of outreach work with the homeless. That was beautiful to see a great organization run well, taking care of their people so well and achieving so much. I can't wait to come in here and thank you all for the same commitment. Just because the Supreme Court passed a law that you may arrest people for sleeping in the public, it breaks my heart to know that our town chose to be as inhumane to our homeless population as the law will allow. Last year, I was in here fighting for bathrooms for my homeless population. Bail movements and sleeping are human necessities. You can't go three days without it. Try it, let me know how you make out. Depriving any human beings from this is cruel and torturous. There is a 73-year-old lady, Lorraine, in the Lancaster County Jail right now. She'd love to be out of there. Her bail is $2,500. She needs a full $2,500. Her crimes, that everything is based on, is trespassing, which means being homeless. If we could muster up the $2,500, she would be arrested again upon release for being homeless. That's like a life sentence for this lady, till we figure something else. By chasing, by chasing the problem of homelessness instead of embracing and managing it, you are prolonging a problem that's not going away, and it just gets bigger and bigger year by year, as you have seen and witnessed. You are inflicting more trauma on the unhoused, and once they get into the legal system, it is almost impossible to get out when you're on the streets. It just compounds everything. And it's also making things impossible for the dedicated outreach workers that can't find their clients, and they can't implement the resources to provide them, that are there to provide them with, moving towards housing. So they're missing. Nobody can get to anybody. And as you chase, instead of embrace these problems, you're also making it impossible to attract the private sector, the churches, and the individuals that we need to help solve these problems and to provide the finances that could help move forward. I can't get the conversations because they see how they're being, we don't have your support, and they're not going to support anything that you don't.
Mr. Costarella, I'm so sorry to interrupt, we have reached three minutes.
I'm past.
But, yes, we have, but I do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Love.
Mr. Harris, are there additional public speakers for this summit period?
Yes, there is. Next is Irene Grevis.
Thank you.
Ms. Grevis, good evening. Good evening. My name is Irene Grevis. I'm on the 400 block of West End Avenue, and my public comment for this evening is regarding the mayor's comment from last city council meeting. The mayor took approximately five minutes to publicly persecute me as a citizen on pending cases from this administration's failure of gross mismanagement, waste, and abuse, and betraying the public's trust. Here are some examples. First, on September 17th, 2021, the city erroneously condemned my property on the same day after testifying as retaliation for exposing financial exploitation of elderly covered up under the abusive guardianship rackets and human trafficking. Case number 311-1/2 of 1999. Example number two, as retaliation and cover-up to the unlawful unauthorized retention of estate funds for elderly for over 10 years without repercussion or intervention, judicial intervention. Case number 36-2015-0323. Example number three, further retaliation, the city officials unjustly revoking all 10 of my residential property licenses on fabricated allegations that risk displacing roughly 50 residents from becoming homeless before the city eventually reinstated my licenses last year, only after complaining to city council, as many of you probably already know. In the midst of a housing crisis, this administration wasted thousands of dollars to work against property owners for enrichment to benefit special interest companies with properties when properties are referred to the Property Reinvestment Board without transparency despite the ARPA funding and Critical Repair Program. In fact, city housing inspectors are known to easily condemn properties to certain minorities, then making it impossible to approve submitted permit application, with each permit application taking up to two months each, just to deny it. Condemn properties such as 903 Manor Street, 739 Manor Street, 758 Manor, 444 Queen Street.
Ms. Grevis, I'm sorry, we've expended three minutes.
No, actually, I would like to get the same amount of time as the mayor did in persecuting me.
Comment for everyone who's commenting publicly.
But this is in response to the mayor's comment, and I have the right to defend myself, as I'm rightfully doing. The mayor had taken five minutes.
Ms. Grevis.
I'm entitled to additional.
This is not a courtroom. You have three minutes for public comment, and you have expended it. Mr. Harris, is there further public comments for this period?
There is none, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed with the next portion of our meeting, which is reports of committees of council. These committee council meetings were held on September 3rd, 2024. We begin with Public Safety Committee, Councilor Diaz.
The committee, the Public Safety Committee did not meet, and I just wanted to let everybody know that I did not attend the meeting because of the death of my family.
Thank you, Councilor. Public Works Committee, Councilor Hirsch is absent this evening, but Councilor Med is filling in.
Thank you, Council President. The Public Works Committee did meet in our last committee meeting, where the Public Works Committee heard a presentation from the Lancaster Direct Commission. We also went over Resolution Number 662024, authorizing amendments to a reimbursement agreement related to a bike and bike share program bring, and subsequently, Council Resolution Number 682024 was added to tonight's agenda, authorizing the transfer of funds from the Enterprise Loan Fund to the curb and sidewalk repair fund, and we will go over all of that in our legislative agenda. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Councilor Med. Next is the Economic Development Committee, which is also Councilor Med.
Thank you, Council President. The Economic Development Committee did not meet in our last session.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Councilor Royo.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Committee did meet. We had one item on our agenda, which was the presentation and budget request from the Lancaster Emergency Medical Services. Bob May, the Executive Director of Lancaster EMS, presented to council regarding the past year's data points, and also provided a request for this upcoming budget season. He also provided an overview of the organization, as well as the structure, and gave some very valuable information for council. That concludes my report, Council President.
Thank you very much, Councilor Royo. Next is Community Planning Committee, Councilor Crager.
Thank you, Council President. Community planning did meet. We had one item on the agenda, the review of the Historical Commission's recommendations for 132 to 134 South Prince Street. And that concludes.
Thank you very much, Councilor Crager. And lastly, Personal Committee, Councilor Fleese.
Thank you, Madam President. The Personal Committee did meet on September 3rd and review appointments to the Airport Authority, Science Commission, Industrial Development Authority, and Lancaster Municipal Authority. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item are resolutions, the first one being Resolution Number 662024. Mr. Harris.
Actually, Madam President, the next agenda would be the Historical.
I just skipped a whole section, I'm so sorry about that. We're under the legislative agenda, keep doing that. Our next item is nominations for appointment, and I will turn back to Councilor Fleese for those.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make my motion, and I think the nominee to Airport Authority, Mr. Daniel Rupert, was asked, could you please come forward, Mr. Rupert?
Leave me, Mr. Rupert.
Thank you for being here tonight. Would you please introduce yourself and tell us why you would like to serve on the board?
I'm Dan Rupert. I'm a resident of the city. I am CPA, I work at RKL in our Small Business Department. When I heard about the opportunity, I was excited because I have an interest in airplanes, and then as well as it being the treasurer role, and me being an accountant and working with numbers, it kind of fit my background.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding this nomination?
Councilor Fleese, Mr. Rupert, thank you for coming. Typically, just for context to the rest of folks, we do these nominations at committee. I know that you were unable to be there, I want to thank you for coming tonight, and also thank you for your willingness to serve. For some background context, there was another appointment made for this position a few months back, not long ago, but that person is not able to serve, so I thank you for stepping into that needed role and filling particularly with your professional background that need for them. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Madam President. Are there any other comments or questions from council, from the public? Thank you, Mr. Rupert, for being here tonight, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Now, I make a motion to appoint Daniel Rupert to the Airport Authority to complete an unfinished term from September 10, 2024, to December 31, 2026. And to reappoint Alexandra Rodriguez to the Science Commission for a term from August 31, 2024, to August 31, 2027. And Paul Fulmer to the Lancaster Industrial Development Authority for a term from December 31, 2023, to December 31, 2028. Gene Kirk Wagners to the Lancaster Municipal Authority for a term from December 31, 2023, to December 31, 2027. Benjamin Benford to the Lancaster Municipal Authority for a term from December 31, 2023, to December 31, 2028. And Harold Bowers Jr. to the Lancaster Municipal Authority for a term from December 31, 2021, to December 31, 2026.
We have a motion and a second for our appointments. Any council comments on them? From the public? Hearing now, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Fleese.
Aye.
Ms. Crager.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. We now move to our Heritage Conservation District items. Mr. Harris.
Mr. President, considering, consider the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Commission for improvements to properties within the Heritage Conservation District. First is Lancaster Redevelopment Fund Inc., owner of 132 to 134 South Prince Street. Proposed demolition of exterior walls facing South Prince and South Water Streets to allow reconstruction. Lancaster Redevelopment Fund Inc., owner of 132, 134 South Prince Street, proposed construction of new exterior walls in a second-story overbuild on an existing structure. And Sustainability Nexus Inc., owner of 718 East Mifflin Street, proposes construction of a new one-story residential building in Green House on an open parcel. And these applications are recommended for approval by the Historical Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. And just to clarify, Councilor Crager, you're looking to take all these together, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second for each of the items. Councilor Crager, do you have additional notes?
I really do not. They're pretty straightforward. I seem to have lost all my notes.
Well, that's okay.
And I don't know where they're, where they lie.
I do see that we have representatives and the applicant for our items A and B on that list, and I would invite any of you forward this time, just in case there's anything additional that wasn't covered at the committee meeting.
And C, apparently.
And C. Thank you. And C. And I don't believe you are at our committee meeting, so if there's anything that you wish to share or more than like, or more than welcome to, but you're not required to, so.
Yeah, I'd love to, but B and C, I'm just going to go first.
They were, they were okay?
They did.
Yes.
I was told I might be able to share slides if you want pretty pictures, or is that too much of a pain in the neck?
No, I don't think that would be necessary this evening, sir. I'm going to have you come up to the podium, just so everyone in the room can hear you. And just if you want to give a very brief summary of your project, it was recommended for approval by the Historical Commission, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity to make a few comments about the project. Maxonizer, formerly the Otz Block of Parkside Avenue, representing Ron Rambo and the rest of Team Rambo Land. That's the namesake of the project, or the name of the project there. First of all, I'm bursting with pride at my hometown and didn't realize I needed to be ready to cry at city council. I might have, have to come to these just to maintain faith in humanity a bit better. Rambo Land is a universal design and community health thought leadership demonstration project revolving around a home for lifelong Lancaster resident Ron Rambo. Ron might be responsible for more curb cuts and ramps in Lancaster than any other individual. I made that up, but it's a lot. When his mother offered him, almost as an aside, the land she owned at the core of the block in the northeast corner of the southern east end, Ron launched a campaign mostly at Central Market and Square One Coffee. Being lucky enough to have been at the center of the Western modernity version of the green building movement, and having grown up on Parkside Avenue in the east end, I was still involved on some boards here, and we were introduced. For many years, we've had world-leading engineers and designers, same teams doing NASA, Google, and Hudson Yards projects, local and international rock stars, including Longview Structures, ELA Civil, Seven Group, and more, working on the project pro bono, and are finally poised to finish permits and raise additional funds in product and material contributions. This project will advance how buildings enable occupants and visitors at all levels of ability we know how, and extend that understanding. But it will also demonstrate how cities can set up economic resilience in low-income neighborhoods while decarbonizing and reducing tax burdens on our citizens by proving new approaches to shared ownership and surplus-producing food, energy, and water systems. We're challenging ideas like keep it simple and don't bite off more than you can chew. We're looking at what must be chewed and have built the team that can chew it. I might be overextending that metaphor a little bit. We believe the image of this building strikes a harmony or reconciling direction between the industrial context on Mifflin, higher education, neighboring campus, and nearby residences, as well as the agrarian history of the county. Our curriculum integrations in the past at Stevens and F&amp;M, and those we're in discussions about through a green building engineering course, and more at Millersville College of Science and Technology, and early strategy discussions with IU 13, all set up with the intention, some of our friends at We Love Philly call the community-as-classroom approach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for some background on the project. Are there any additional council comments on the motion to approve? Councilor Med.
Council President, thank you. It's such a joy to see this project come forward, you know, as somebody who has met Ron through my time here in Lancaster, it's really, it's really great to see this, and so deserved, and if there's anything that I can do in a capacity to help with this project, please let me know.
Thank you, Councilor Med. Mayor Saraje?
If I may, I was not at the meeting last week when these were reviewed, and I do just want to thank the team representing the Lancaster Redevelopment Fund for their perseverance and the peace in which this project is moving forward to serve our homelessness community. And I also had an opportunity to visit the East Clay Street project, which I think you may have seen front-page coverage of, and construction is commencing there, and to just offer my to just offer my thanks to council for their financial commitment to support the capital costs for both of these projects, as well as supporting the lower homeless shelter operating costs when it opens in mid-December. I also love Rambo Land. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Madam President.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Kleest.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we're back to seeing, or I was before, resolutions this evening. Our first is Administration Resolution Number 662024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the council of the City of Lancaster authorizing the city to amend a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to use congestion, mitigation, and air quality improvement funding for the Lancaster Bike-It Bike-Share Program.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second on Resolution 66. This is coming up through Public Works, which will be taken by Councilor Omed this evening.
Thank you, Council President. As we did go over this in the committee meeting, this amendment to the funding agreement will allow the city to receive additional funds which have been granted. This program is with our bike-it program, and this effort was originally funded with $97,000 of State Transportation Department grant. And if Director Campbell has anything else, or if there's any questions or comments from council?
None, Mrs. Sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Omed. Any additional council comments on the resolution? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Madam President.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Kleest.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye.
Our next item is Administration Resolution Number 672024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the council of the City of Lancaster approving the adoption of an amendment to the Act 537 Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the City of Lancaster.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. With all sewer plan module changes, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection adopted there under Chapter 371 of Piles 25 of the Pennsylvania Code requires municipalities to adopt an official sewage facility plan providing for the sewage services adequate to prevent contamination of the waters of the Commonwealth and/or health hazards to sewage waste and to revise segment whenever is necessary to determine whether a proposed method of sewage disposal for a new land development conforms to the Comprehensive Program of Pollution Control and Water Quality Management. I think we went over this a while back for Thaddeus Stevens and one of the properties that they, that they built every year. So it's just to say that there's adequate sewer capacity for the, for the project and the Comprehensive Program of Pollution Control and Water Quality Management.
Thank you very much, Councilor Craig. Yes, so councillors may recall that we, these projects for Thaddeus Stevens tend to come up annually as the new, new semester begins. So this is a similar project to what they proposed before, and obviously, we've done sewer planning modules many times in the past. Any additional comments from council? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Madam President.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Kleest.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye.
Our next item is Resolution Number 682024. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the council of the City of Lancaster approving the transfer of $750,000 from the Enterprise Zone Loan Fund to the curb and sidewalk fund.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second on Resolution 68. Any council comments? Oh, I'm so sorry. This is coming up through Public Works. Councilor Omed.
Thank you, Council President. As you are aware, the city has a sidewalk and curb repair fund, which has been very popular, and this resolution would authorize transfer of $750,000 from the Enterprise Zone Loan Fund to the curb and sidewalk repair fund to continue to give these low-interest loans to city residents to improve the sidewalks on their properties.
Thank you, Councilor Omed. Yes, and this has been a popular and successful program that Public Works has been working on. So I want to thank Director Stephen Campbell, who's here, for helping us get to this point. Thank you. And if you have anything, oh, Cindy McCormick is here. I'm so sorry. Cindy, you're right there, too, so thank you. If there's anything that either of you wish to share additionally about this request, you can do so at this time if you'd like. Quite all right. Additional comments from council? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Madam President.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Kleest.
Aye.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye.
And that concludes our legislative agenda this evening. We now move into our second public comment period. So for comments on items that were not previously on the agenda, again, comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and block of residence for the meeting record. If there's anyone wishing to give a public comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close public comments this evening, and will now move to the report of the mayor. Mayor Sarachi.
Thank you. I'm definitely going to hold on to the comment that you made earlier, sir, that you might need to come to city council to restore your faith in humanity. That has not always been my experience sitting up here for over decades, so thank you for sharing that perspective. And it is so true that welcoming week and the stories of our new residents of the City of Lancaster do really make my heart swell in celebration of what the city is and what it means to be a Lancasterian. So thank you, and thank you to Milly and Zagra, and to the commitment of this council in continuing to pursue our welcoming certification. I would like to provide a very brief update on city construction projects and paving. I'm going to talk a little bit about paving. We all know how critical it is to maintain the quality of our streets. It's one of the most frequently complained about items, is that we need to pave more streets. To date, our awesome Public Works staff have paved almost three miles of streets at a cost of $422,000. As you may recall, we are now doing most of the paving in-house, and this is saving us money. The estimated contract cost date would have been about $570,000, so we have generated about $150,000 in savings so far this year. More paving is underway and set to be completed in fall, in the fall, and so we will be rounding out just over five miles of paving. We are not the only ones paving in the city. As UGDI completes their line replacement projects, they are also paving. So far, they've paved about just a little over two miles of city streets. Other completed construction projects include the East Mifflin Street Green Infrastructure Project, 25 ADA ramps to your note earlier, and two traffic signal upgrades. Additionally, there are multiple street improvement projects going out to bid this fall, including Queen and Farm Street intersection improvements, the Southview Street Mobility Project, and traffic signal upgrades for Manor Street. And at long last, construction has started on the Plum Street Roundabout. We continue to see a reduction in crashes at this intersection, only one since the pilot began in 2019. And while it took us a long time to gather the funding that we needed through various grants, I'm pleased to say that it is finally moving ahead, and we have a tentative completion date of December 2024. Residents, council members, anyone can keep up with construction going on in the City of Lancaster by checking out our construction map online at the city website, cityoflancasterpa.gov/current-construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Sarachi. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is the report of council. I just have a very brief one, and it's more of like a plug. It was mentioned briefly earlier, but this weekend is the final of the Lancaster Unity Cup, and I wanted to take a moment to thank particularly the Lancaster Rec and the other organizing partners for undertaking this multi-week and multi-month event that concludes this Saturday, September 14th, with the semifinals and finals. And that begins, I believe, at 10:00 a.m. It's very exciting, and it's a very unique event that we have in our city, and I want to make sure that people get out and experience it. It's just a really incredibly fun event, so I wanted to give a special shout-out to them for that. And that concludes my report this evening. Now we'll open it up to reports of, or excuse me, council comments. Hearing none, having reached the end of our agenda, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.